Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have one action item, our agenda item on our agenda tonight is a discussion on our neighborhood traffic management plan, an update on that. And we'll start our meeting as we usually do with hearing from members of our public. If you're here and would like to speak on this agenda item at our study session, the traffic management plan, you may do so now. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here in City Hall, you may come to the podium and speak now. And we'll see if anyone is joining us online and would like to speak. If you are, you would raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't think we have anybody joining us for public comments, so let us move right to agenda item number one, the traffic, neighborhood traffic management plan update. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited to bring this forward to you. This was directed by City Council to bring back an update on this and then also to look at some solutions for our school safety with closure to schools. So we have some recommendations on providing safer routes to school also. So Lauren, are you going to start this?
Just briefly, yeah, thanks. So we, it was a long memo that in hindsight, we probably could have made into two memos. So we're gonna, if it's okay, we're gonna format the meeting, talk about NTMP, pause for that discussion, and then talk about the schools. And we can even do one school and then the next if that helps break this down into more digestible pieces. Jordan Jeffries from our engineering division and Ashley Holland from our planning division are leading the charge tonight, bringing their combined expertise in engineering and engagement, which is really sort of the crux of the NTMP. So I'm gonna cue the slides and then turn it over to both of them.
All right, well, I will kick off the discussion on the neighborhood traffic management program update. I think last year, council and staff both realized that the program wasn't working very well, wasn't very efficient for staff and the residents weren't really getting the results, good results. So late last year, in the fall, the program was put on hold and we reevaluated it and modified it to make it more efficient for residents and staff. I'll talk briefly about the history of the program and the current program, and then I'll turn it over to Ashley to talk a little bit about the proposed redesign. So the program kicked off in nineteen ninety-seven. It was revised then in two thousand and two. We don't have really good information. So the program kicked off in nineteen ninety-seven, and it was revised five years later in two thousand and two. We don't really have good information on what the program was like before two thousand and two, but it was, the two thousand and two program was very prescriptive. It was a scoring system and weighted on speeds and volumes and geometry of the roadway. It was kind of complicated. In two thousand and nine, the program went offline, I think because of the financial crisis and funding shortages, probably staff shortages to some extent as well. It was reinitiated in two thousand and fourteen and revamped to make it simpler. And that was the program we had been using through two thousand and twenty-two. So the program, before it was put on hold in two thousand and twenty-two, had fifty-three segments enrolled over those eight years. And of the fifty-three segments, sixteen segments were successful in getting traffic calming installed. Again, prior to two thousand and nine, we don't really have good records, so I don't have stats on what was done prior to then. This is a map showing all the improvements that have been installed through the NTMP. A lot of symbols on there, so the black triangles are asphalt speed humps. The orange pentagons are concrete speed humps, and then the green dots are planters, which are medians or chicanes, horizontal traffic calming. And then you can see the schools on there as well. As you'll notice, most of the areas around the existing schools have already been treated, particularly Wilmore Davis, there's a lot of traffic calming around Prospect. And then you can see a lot of the cut-through corridors around town have already been treated as well. So the current NTMP process, a segment is enrolled when a resident files a request with us that requires five signatures from property owners along that segment. Once we get that, we do an engineering evaluation, which involves speed and volume data collection, when we put the hoses out on the roadway, review of the accident history, and then an analysis of geometric features, signage, and ped and bike facilities. So typically, any street with an eighty-fifth percentile speed that's greater than the speed limit is eligible for traffic calming, or if there's an accident pattern that's attributable to speed, which is pretty rare on our local streets. We do have speeding, but it doesn't often translate to accidents. Once we've established the eligibility, we have a neighborhood meeting. We've been doing those online the last few years, starting when the pandemic happened. And we require generally a consensus from that meeting that people on the call want to move forward with a plan. So if we get that consensus, generally fifty percent or greater, we'll go ahead and develop a plan. And then we submit that to the resident representative, and they're required to go get eighty percent signature, eighty percent of all the property owners along that segment must sign. And then in addition to that, any property owners that are directly adjacent to a speed home must sign as well. So I'll talk about that a bit in the next slide, but that's been a problem for us, causes a lot of rework. So this is, these are some of the issues with the current NTMP process, or the process that was put on hold in two thousand and twenty-two. The resident selects the segment, so this sometimes can be a problem. For example, if we're looking at a street from thirty-second to thirty-eighth, and they only want to treat the segment from thirty-second to thirty-fourth, that can just push the speeding problem further down the street. People will slow down on those speed humps and then speed up when there's no speed humps. So ideally, we could weigh in on what the segment should be. There's also significant staff time involved. We have individual neighborhood meetings for every segment. Often, they aren't very productive and we start talking about other issues. We have to revise the treatment locations. Like I mentioned, that requirement for the property owners adjacent to the speed home must sign. So sometimes somebody will change their mind and we have to move the speed home, and then they don't want it, and we have to move it again. And there's kind of a narrow range of spacing that you want for speed humps, so it makes it kind of tricky to cite these sometimes. We've had one project went on for two years while we were trying to find a suitable layout for the speed homes. We also have to verify and coordinate signature collection, help residents track down property owners, can be time-consuming. And then often, we'll prepare plans for a segment that doesn't get the eighty percent approval, so it's all just kind of for naught. We spend a lot of time and then the project doesn't get approved. Residents are also frustrated with the approval process. The longer segments, they have to get a lot of signatures to meet that eighty percent. Parfett Street had a pretty significant speeding problem, and they just gave up because it was too hard to track down owners and get signatures over a four-block segment. Also, speed humps are installed sometimes where they may not be warranted. If we have an eighty-fifth percentile speed of twenty-five point one, technically, that's eligible, but really, a speed home probably isn't going to do a lot of good there. And on the flip side, we have speed humps where they are warranted, the neighbors can't get the eighty percent approval. So that's also a problem. And then lastly, just the lack of the timeline, the formal timeline, can be frustrating for residents. Can take a while to get these projects approved. So that's it for the current process, and I'll turn it over to Ashley to talk a little bit about the proposed redesign.
Great, so we've talked about the history, what the process is now, and some of the limitations there. So let's talk about the new program we're proposing. So first, we want to start with what our goals were in this redesign. These are foundational for what you'll see coming up, so I want to spend a moment going through them. So our first goal is to streamline the process. So this will help staff better manage the program and also help residents understand the steps that they're going to move through throughout the process before they apply. We also want to recalibrate things so it's easier to get traffic calming where it's warranted. So as Jordan mentioned, sometimes in the current program, if not enough residents sign on in the end, then we don't get traffic calming where it is warranted. And then we also want to create clear eligibility standards to match the right solution with the issue. Because also, in the current process, residents can get a speed home when the data tells us that maybe they don't need one. In the redesign program, we're basing the thresholds to get those physical improvements on the data that we're collecting. We also want to utilize, better utilize our staff expertise. So one of the philosophies of this redesign is that it's driven by expertise, that residents see the daily issues on their streets that we as staff can't see every day, so they bring us the problem and we craft the solution. We also want to work in partnership with other programs, so we hear about speeding and traffic issues in a number of different ways, and we want to make sure that these, all these programs are working with one another and talking to one another, so we can strengthen the individual programs and not duplicate efforts. And then finally, right now, residents can apply any time of the year, but there are better and worse times of year to collect traffic data and of course, to construct the improvements. And so it, we want to establish a timeline for the program so that residents can understand how long it's going to take to move through this, create some transparency and alleviate some of those frustrations. So how is it going to work? Residents start by submitting their application with fifty percent, more than fifty percent of residents along the segment in support. Then we conduct our traffic analysis. We'll have wonderful folks like Jordan create a traffic plan with, when they look at that traffic data. Then we'll send out a letter to our residents with the data, the proposed plan, the date for the open house, and timeline for the next steps in the process. Staff will hold an open house for all of the segments that are moving through that year, where residents can discuss the plan with staff and voice their support or opposition. And then the open house is part of a two-week comment period where we will also solicit feedback online, and folks can give their thoughts, and staff will look at all of that input to see if that, if they need to make any changes to the plan. And then we'll come to you all with a package of all the NTMP projects for that year, and then finally, all of those projects will be included in the bid and construction for the following year. So we think we've made some improvements to what is the current process, so I'll go through a few of those in the new process versus the older process. So the threshold to apply now, as Jordan mentioned, is five signatures. By moving that up to more than fifty percent of the residents along the segment, this allows us to evaluate if there is community support for traffic calming earlier in the process, instead of waiting to that eighty percent later in the approval process, like the current program. And since this is a resident-driven program, we do want to see that there's community buy-in. We are also moving to a seven-day traffic count. Right now, it's a two-day count, and this will allow us to better look at traffic patterns throughout the week. In the new system, our engineers will draft the solution. So as Jordan mentioned, right now, we require our residents to come to consensus about what kind of traffic calming that they would like to see. So this can lead to speed humps where they're not warranted, and a lack of traffic calming where it is warranted. So now the solution will be based on expertise. The comment period, again, goes back to the idea that we are asking for resident buy-in earlier in the process, and so we can alleviate this eighty, the need for eighty percent of the residents to, you know, buy into the program much later on. And this'll, this'll allow us to be a little more efficient. And then finally, in the new process, the NTMP projects for that year will all move through the process together. So this will allow us to have one open house, one council meeting, and one, one package for bidding construction, so creating a lot more efficiency for our staff and allowing us to get the best possible pricing as well. So in the updated program, we've broken down the types of eligible traffic calming into three categories. So type one is our low-impact traffic calming. So this would be a speed trailer, a new speed limit sign, some striping, we, and for type two, it's kind of the next level up, anything from type one plus speed humps. And then for type three, anything from either of the first two types, and then horizontal improvements as well, like medians and chicanes. So we've split our eligibility for these three types of traffic calming into four categories, and these are, these are determined by the eighty-fifth percentile speed that we find in the traffic analysis that we conduct. So you can see the details of exactly what those speeds are in your packet, but essentially, if the data shows that the segment has normal traffic, then you're not eligible for traffic calming. If the segment has mild speeding, then that segment qualifies for type one, that low-impact traffic calming. If the data shows it's more moderate speeding, you're eligible for type two. And then if it's pretty significant speeding, you are eligible for type three. You're also eligible for type three traffic calming if you have a history of accidents that are attributable to speed, so those mid-block speed accidents, and then also, if you're, if the segment is adjacent to a school or on a school route. This slide here just has the timeline, so we've already talked through these process steps, but this is what it's laid, but this is what it looks like over the course of a year. So January through April, we'll accept applications. In May and June, we'll do the traffic counts. In that summer, our engineer will take a look at that data and draft the plan and send the letter out to our residents. Later in that summer, fall, we'll have the open house and the comment period. We'll come to you all for a meeting, a council meeting in later that fall and early into the winter, and then finally, everything will be added to the bid and construction process for the following spring and summer. So for us, we have a few short-term next steps. If you all provide consensus to move forward, we'll reopen the program this year with the projects that have been on standby. Like Jordan mentioned, we have paused the program while we've been revamping things, and so there are seven that are in the queue now. And because we have the shortened timeline this year, we are, we do not expect to open the program for new applications this year and focus instead on the seven that are on standby. And then next year, we will roll out the new timeline. And here is where we'll stop and have a bit of a discussion before we move on to our discussion of schools. So essentially, we'd like to know if you all support this redesign.
Counselor Ong?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple, couple questions. One was, you talked about how, I completely agree with the having the city have more in a say, the staff, as opposed to the residents, because I would assume right now that the residents don't have any, say, when a sidewalk or curb and gutter or asphalt road, no, you're not having them weigh in and decide, right? This is somewhat similar. But my one question was, on the, on the percentage of, I think I mentioned fifty percent is what it called for. So I know that in City Council, we have a couple percentages that we use quite often. One is the two-thirds, that's sixty-six percent, and the other is the supermajority, which is the six-eighths, which is seventy-five percent. And so on the, asking for the fifty percent, I feel like is, is too low. So if I got eight houses and I got four that are for it and four that are against it, that, that doesn't seem to work in my mind. I feel like it's, you've got to break past that fifty percent mark. And what number is that? I'm throwing out a two-thirds, because I know that works for, for City Council. And then the other percentage that was raised was the, what percentage would it take if you wanted to take out the traffic control device? And it needs to be high. And that's where I think that supermajority, seventy-five percent, is what I would probably suggest, that if people want to take it out, it needs to be a pretty substantial percentage, pretty high threshold that we're going to take this out because the city spent money on it. And then there was, there's some criteria under the revised steps, I think it was in the packet page four, including the following steps. And, and I wanted to know, like, what is, is that criteria meant for residents, homeowners, property owners? And also, there's some other criteria, just asking, like, is, does it apply to apartment residents, single-unit homes, so renters? You know, just kind of wondering, like, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna have an issue if we have some type of an apartment? And there's smaller apartments, you know, like in District Two, and there might be families, might be kids running around, and is it just going to be left up to the single apartment owner of the entire building, who may or may not even live in the state? Or do the, do the residents that actually live and work here have a say? So those are my, my questions. Thank you.
Sure, I can, I can try to address those. For the fifty percent threshold, I think our intent was to be over fifty percent. So if you have a scenario, like you said, eight homes and four and four, that's, that's tough. But we really just want to demonstrate that there's support in the neighborhood for, for traffic calming. As far as what threshold is needed to remove speed humps, I'm not sure Steve might be able to answer that. We haven't had to remove one since I've been at the city. I think it's pretty high. Is it eighty percent, Steve? Do you know offhand?
I believe, under the current policy, that's about eighty percent or above in order to remove petitions. Since the inception of the program, the threshold to approve for anything that goes onto a street is eighty percent. That is the majority, and that helps the neighborhood on that block to keep the device there. And so I think, just kind of give it a background, but to answer the question of removing it, it had to be the same percent or greater, and that was eighty.
Yeah, so the fifty-third percent threshold, that was something we came up with. We're certainly open to council's input on that, if they want to, if you guys want to raise that or examine that closer. We are open to that. I think there's benefit in that because it, you have less of a risk of it being removed further down the line. As for the property owners versus renters and the apartment buildings, we did want to get renters engaged, because right now, the current policy doesn't allow for that. It's just property owners. Renters don't really have a say. We feel that they should have a say, because they're the ones who live there and experience, experience the traffic conditions, and like you said, the owner may not even live in state. So our goal is to be flexible on that. We don't want to be very rigid with this policy. It's not really going to be codified. We're willing to work with residents. If the owner supports it, you know, then that changes the denominator. It's one out of one. If, if the owner doesn't support it, we're certainly open to the renters, trying to get support from, you know, if there's five units from the five other renters, and then that denominator just becomes five. So we'll work with the resident to achieve whatever that threshold is. That, that was kind of our intent in that. And I don't know if I answered all your questions. Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this updated plan to us. Can I just verify, did you say that you had fifty-three projects and only sixteen were approved? Is that the right number?
That's correct, for, since two thousand and fourteen. And that's not exact. We, we just went through the folders, approximate, but it's pretty close.
And that definitely screams a need for an update on this program, and I appreciate it. And I, and I do like all of your suggestions. And maybe to address, council, council member owns fifty percent, maybe if we could just change the language to more than fifty percent, rather than having to put a hard number in there. And then my next question is, you said you have seven of them on the back burner that you're going to put in for this year, and then the whole program will start brand-new next year. What is the capacity, what is the max number that, like, what would be the cutoff each year?
I think it's yet to be determined as to how this new program works, but we think we can take on more segments. So we had fifty-three over eight years. What's that, about six or seven per year? That's about average. We've had, I think, eight or nine some years, but seven's right about what I would say is average.
I mean, thank you, otherwise, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck?
Thanks for all your hard work on this. I had questions about the renters, owners, residents as well, and so I'm glad that we, we discussed that. I just would also highlight that I think it's important that maybe when we're reaching out to different types of homes, or residences, that we think about, you know, a way for the application to work, if it is a larger apartment complex or, you know, multifamily type unit, that it could be something that is posted in the, in a public space for people to sign on to, or, like, to just make it as accessible as possible, because I think something that we should try to do in this revamp is, in an effort to engage with renters or people who are not living in traditional, single-family homes, is see how we can speed up this process, make it more accessible. And I think speeding it up, which is definitely what I think you all have accomplished with this plan, is an opportunity for us to make sure that people who are renting, you know, if they have pets and kiddos and they're, the street in front of them, the traffic's awful, they might throw their arms up and decide to leave Wheat Ridge if, if they don't feel like it's moving along fast enough. And so just encourage us to get really creative on that, which I know you all are experts in the community engagement piece. And then also, in terms of the app, or the application, or the petition, is it a petition that goes around? Is that, is that how that works? Or how do people, how do the fifty percent, like, sign up to do this? Like, to be a part of this coalition that's going to work on traffic calming?
So the current program, it's a petition. We supply the form, and the enrollment process, the resident will write a letter, and then they get five residents to sign on. So I think we need to work that out, but we do want to create a specific form that people will use, so probably, yeah, a similar petition form.
I would just suggest, like, if we can have something that is digital or not just a paper form, that we get into the nitty-gritty of people physically having to do that would be great, just because it's two thousand and twenty-three. And then, I just have a couple of neighbors who, and I've actually talked to, I think I talked to Steve about it, like, years ago, but learned that, and we're going to start talking about speed humps and bumps and all of that again, but the, the speed humps, I think- the asphalt or something, they start to wear down, and they are started to be, like, they're degraded, and they make it so that they don't do their job anymore. And I don't, I don't know if that's part of this process or not, but I do wonder if there's an opportunity for us to, once we get this under control, to go back and revisit and look at the existing infrastructure that we already have in place and see if we need to be doing any kind of updating or putting in speed bumps that actually work.
Yeah, we could certainly take a look at our inventory of asphalt humps. They aren't as durable as concrete. The last few years, we've been putting in strictly concrete, so I think those ones last a little longer.
Thanks again for all the work.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. This is great. I support this. I do have, and I'm not trying to play devil's advocate here, I'm asking sort of a larger question of, can we have too much neighborhood traffic calming? Because I live on a major thoroughfare, and I just want us to think about the fact that we have Kipling and Wadsworth, which are state highways, and then we have 32nd and 38th and 44th, which of course are throughways. And what happens is people pull out of neighborhoods onto these major streets, and those of us who have homes that face those streets are often dealing with very, very fast traffic. I think somewhat due to frustration of coming out of neighborhoods with lots of bumps and bumps, which is totally fair. Or not fair, I don't know. My concern is, is to your point of, I'm thinking of where I live, which is west of Kipling, between Kipling and Youngfield, and there are a lot of old, older homes that face 38th as well as apartment buildings that face 38th, lots of kids out. And of course, I've often wanted to do something about the sometimes 60 to 70 miles an hour that I've seen come down 38th Avenue at night and accidents, and also, as we know, we've had people killed. Are there, and if this is not part of this, but I guess I'm asking the question, if someone like me wants to call in and say, I have all apartment dwellers around me, but it'd be great if we could have some sort of traffic calming, and I know we're going to deal with 38th regarding other things, but we have some speeding issues on, we know we have speeding issues at 32nd by the school, excuse me, by the high school. Are there things that can be done within this program for some of these east-west thoroughways? I'm not thinking that it would be a speed hump, because I think I would launch my truck off that, but just kind of, does this program include that, or is that something different that we need to think about? Because I am concerned that as we build up these neighborhood programs, I do think it does create pressure on some of these thoroughways, if that makes sense. So I don't have an answer to any of that. I just want to make sure we have a conversation about it.
Sure. So the NTMP is primarily focused on local streets, but we do intend to allow collectors to, collector streets and arterial streets to bring issues to our attention via the NTMP, so they can get the support of their neighbors. But we feel like collectors and arterials maybe warrant more of a city project. You know, they impact a lot of people, not just the residents on the local street. So we do want the program to be able to serve as a conduit for residents to notify us about issues on collectors and arterials, but we would then basically take the program over as a city project. As you know, speed humps typically aren't allowed on these collectors and arterials, 32nd, 38th, because of ambulance, emergency routes, right? Yeah. So we are looking, like, right now, 29th is an emergency route. We're looking at some horizontal traffic improvements, which are basically medians and chicanes, like you'll see on Ward Road has that. Those are an option, but whatever we do, we need to work with the fire department and emergency services. So we're looking at some other options. There are speed cushions and things that might work. They're basically speed humps with gaps for tires, large wide gaps that a fire truck can fit through and not hit the humps, things like that. Right now, what we typically have done in the past is put on, put up the radar speedboards. And, you know, those are somewhat effective, but obviously, some people just ignore them. So, yeah, we do intend to address collectors and arterials through this program, so.
We want to know about the issue, but the NTMP is not going to be a good fit for, like, 38th Avenue, for example. But through the course of redesigning the program, I think one of the things we talked about, including with Maria, our public works director, is we don't have a lot of good baseline data. We don't routinely, on any sort of routine schedule, collect traffic volume and speed data, sort of on a rotating schedule on all of our streets, and it's something we should probably be doing for a grown-up city by now, and we have more road issues and concerns. And so that is, it's not captured in this memo, but it's certainly sort of foremost in our mind. That should probably be a standing budget item, that we have a contract with a traffic engineer or traffic count specialist, who, there's even a firm here in Wheat Ridge, who can provide that data to us routinely so that we can be more proactive on those more challenging segments.
Do you need a council initiative or request to start doing that? Because I completely agree that that sort of should go with this neighborhood program, that we're looking at our larger arterials.
Yeah, I think we've heard murmurings from each of you in sort of different contexts that that's important. So we're about to start budget season, and it's very likely it's in the budget when we talk to you next.
Great.
Thank you. Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of along those lines, did the police just get radar that collects that data now?
They do. They have a, I don't know if it's new technology, it's new for us. It's not the speed trailers that you see. Those don't collect data for some reason. I don't know why you think they would. But PD does have boxes that they put out, and you wouldn't know they're there unless you knew they're there. So it avoids, hopefully, some of that issue of people maybe going faster because they see a speed trailer or slowing down. So, yeah, we have a couple of those, and we're moving them around to specific neighborhoods to track data. You should see it on social media, and it kind of, it puts in perspective what's really happening, because we all do see, I do on my street too, that you'll see that one car going maybe 60, and then you just piss, you know, you get pissed off, and you think everybody's going 60, which typically they're not, but data is good. It's important to inform what type of mitigation efforts we're going to make.
Yeah, along with Ms. Weaver, I generally, I agree with all of this, and I think Mr. Ohm brought up a good point about the majority, supermajority, all that. But I do think, you know, just saying above 50% is probably a good threshold there, especially to start like that. I think that gives us a good idea. I was going to ask, and I think Lauren, you might have already answered it in your question about the data, why maybe we don't just make this a proactive approach to where the city goes in, studies each section of neighborhood or whatever it is, and figures out what needs to go in there without the neighbors necessarily needing to raise their hand to say, help?
We can. I mean, so if we got a phone call and it was sort of egregious, we wouldn't say, sorry, you have to wait and go through the NTMP. We certainly, I think what we wanted to do with this program is to sort of shift the framework from a speed bump entitlement program, which requires 80% of agreement, to a, let's use engineering discretion and judgment and, like, take the temperature. Yes, there's some consensus, we need to do something here, and then we can add the layer of technical expertise and calibrate the intervention to the issue. So, but in terms of doing it sort of on every street, frankly, it's probably a resource issue at this point, and it's also why we needed to make this program more efficient, because we used to have somebody solely dedicated to this kind of, and if we still had one person solely dedicated, we could probably take that approach of working our way district by district. So we, you know, if there is an issue, I mean, Jordan gets these a lot, people submit service requests, or people go to you, and we get the emails, and, you know, we are cataloging those. It becomes sort of a data management, looking for patterns, trying to be efficient and thoughtful with the time and resources that we have. There are some communities that have just sole staffs dedicated to neighborhood traffic programs. That hasn't been our history. But we're hopeful that this sort of modification, tweaking of the levers, means we can be quicker and more efficient at deploying things when we learn about them, how we learn about them.
Are there any streets or neighborhoods right now that you guys just absolutely know need traffic calming, but the neighbors have just kind of said, no, we don't want it, or?
Not to my knowledge.
Parfatt Street, 44th to 48th was one that had a pretty substantial speeding problem, and they just couldn't get the signatures. So that would be one. There are probably others that I can't think of off the top of my head, but there are probably a few.
Yeah, well, I mean, generally speaking, the people speeding in the neighborhood are the people that live in the neighborhood, right? So, you know, okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not me, it's the guy next to me.
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forth. I really appreciate the streamlined approach, and I think it'll be more effective and efficient. I did have a couple of questions, and Lauren kind of touched on mine in regards to, like, the timeline right now of what that timeline looks like. And it sounds like if there is something very egregious that we won't hold until a year later, because in looking at that timeline, it would be more than a year before, you know, from beginning to actual construction. So I don't know if you can maybe touch on that timeline now versus after this is implemented?
So the timeline now, we just take them as they come. We may get, we get applications all throughout the year, so each segment is on a different timeline. We may be preparing plans for one segment while we're doing a neighborhood meeting for the next. And some of them lag on longer than others. We're at the whim of the residents, how long it takes them to gather signatures, things like that. So we're just trying to make it easier for us and for residents by putting it on an annual timeline. So anybody who applies from January through April would have their speed humps installed, if successful, the next year, the following year in the spring. So that would be the timeline. But then also, yeah, we do get service requests throughout the year, typically not related to speeding, but we can discover speeding issues through those service requests. Oftentimes, we'll go out and get traffic data if somebody wants a stop sign or something, and then through that, we may become aware of a speeding issue. And, yeah, if it was egregious enough, we would probably just take a look at it separately from this program. If, say, the 85th percentile speed were five-plus miles per hour over the speed limit, we would probably just take it on and look at it, independent of this.
Okay. I agree with the over 50% threshold, and then that kind of leads into my next question in regards to the public input process and, like, opening up comments and everything. So if in the engineer's opinion, we do need to have some sort of traffic calming device, and yet it's no longer supported by the residents in the area, whether they don't like the method that we want to implement or what have you, and it drops below that 50%, are we still going to, you know, use our best judgment and expertise and move forward? Or if they no longer want it, will we choose not to?
That's a good question. I think we would need to weigh the likelihood of that speed hump being removed. If we're approaching 80% disapproval, where they could get it removed, then I think we would maybe need to take a step back. But, yeah, if there's an egregious problem and we don't think that the speed humps would be removed in the future, I think we would probably just move forward. That's my thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this, because I think this is something that we get contacted about a lot. And when we're talking about residents, okay, in the neighborhood, is that one person from each home that can sign this? How does that differ from apartments? So, you know, you want to count how many households there are on a block, and you have an apartment building that might have 20 apartments in it, and then at the very end, oh, wow, you didn't get 50%. So how does that play into it, you know, the apartment thing, as to the people who live there all the time?
Well, one of the things, your first question, I think we're looking at households, not, you know, if six people live in a home, we're not saying that half of them need to sign and all of that. And then when we're talking about apartments versus individual residents or, you know, single-unit homes and things like that, we're really trying to gauge general support in that neighborhood. So, you know, that 50%, that more than 50%, it is, we're going to work with our residents to find out, what does this look like on your block? Is your block all single-unit? Is your block mostly single-unit and, you know, two duplexes? It's going to, we're going to do this, I think, a little bit more on a case-by-case basis. And for, you know, a large apartment building, maybe it is just the property owner, and if they don't sign on, and half of the other, you know, units do, half of the other homes do, then we can still move forward, you know? So we're going to be able to work with our residents to figure out what works for their individual situation.
Yeah, that's good, individualized. I also think having the traffic trailer for a week is a good idea. And also, I hear from people, well, you know, it was the wrong time of year, okay? It's busier in summer than it is in winter. And that is true, okay? So having a timeline like you have from January to April, putting out the applications, and then having your open meetings where you collect all of the petitions at the time, and people can talk about it, is a good idea. And how do you think you're going to get this out to the public?
I mean, after we hear from you all, we will work with our folks in communications to do a big communications push before applications open in January and get all of our ducks in a row, you know, here's exactly what the petition process looks like, here's, you know, how you submit your application, whatever that looks like, so that we can hit the ground running in January and make sure that people, in 2024, we are all on the same page, us and the community, with how it works.
Yeah, that's good. And the connections or transcript or, because that, whatever is, would be helpful too. I think being organized like this, it's just been kind of up in the air, you know? And people are waiting, okay, when are we getting this hump? And all this kind of a thing like that. So I think that's, it's excellent to be organized like this, where everybody knows what's going on. And then it also helps them not calling city staff all the time, right? So I think this is a great thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple more comments, questions is, one comment is, I definitely support the timeline for, you can't just submit this anytime. I think that's going to be great for helping council and staff set budget, so I think that's a really good idea. And just to keep everything on track for the rest of the staff. The one question I did have, though, is, is there, are chicanes, is that something that's in the toolbox for the city? And do you look, when you look at issues on a street, do you have different criteria based on speed and, say, the width right-of-way that you could say, like, oh, this one is too small for chicanes, or this one would be the right size, you know, kind of like a Goldilocks, and that you could apply? Like, I know on 41st by Wilmer Davis, there's a combination of some speed humps, a speed hump in Ireland, I don't know that it's maybe as effective as some other ones, but it's something a little bit different, it gives a little character. There are some streets in Wheat Ridge that these local roads have very wide right-of-ways. And we all know that generally, the wider the street, the faster people perceive they can go down that street.
That is exactly true, yeah. When people have a big, wide, open road, they tend to treat it like a runway and go a lot faster. So chicanes are absolutely an option.
Will you describe what a chicane is?
So a chicane is, instead of a median in the center of your road, it's like two medians on the side of the road. So they're often installed with a median, so you kind of have to weave around them, and that weaving movement slows you down. You have to slow down to maneuver around them. So they're often hard to sight, because people lose parking when we put them in, and you can't block people's driveways. So we've tried some roads, and we just can't, we just can't fit them in. So, yeah, definitely the lane widths, the access configurations, all of that plays in. Some roads are too narrow. We need to maintain about 10-foot width, 10-foot width minimum for our lanes. Some roads are too narrow. We need to maintain about ten-foot width, ten-foot width minimum for our lanes. So, you know, if you have a narrow roadway, it's twenty-five feet flow line to flow line, it's hard to fit two chicanes in there and keep your ten-foot, two lanes at ten-foot minimum width. So yeah, it's a case-by-case basis, but we do like to install those when we can. They work pretty well.
Do you have any examples, select locations right now in the city of those where they exist?
There's a good example right by my house on Teller Street between Thirty-second and Thirty-fifth. And it's a series of two chicanes, median, and two more chicanes, so you have to weave through. That's what we're looking at on Twenty-ninth potentially. There's a couple more locations throughout the city. Ward, Ward Road has some between Thirty-second and Thirty-eighth. And then in front of Wilmore Davis, like you mentioned, there might be one or two more locations, but can't recall.
There's Fifty-second, like by Actors, is those pointy things that come out, they're kind of a pain.
Yeah, that stretch is not.
That's awful, because you have to stop traffic for one side to go. And then it took away parking for the homes, you know?
That's our radar. Is that not our radar?
Yeah.
Let's not take on their problems.
Yeah, I think they're kind of too far out in the street. I think I know where you're talking about, but. Yeah, we, we look at all our turning radiuses when we design them. So we make sure that emergency vehicles and buses can get through without going over the curb. Or we look to install a mountable curb that you can roll over and it won't destroy it.
I had a couple of questions. What does the typical signage look like for a speed hump? I've seen, I've seen some that are sort of little, you know, red reflectors or something next to it. Do we have signage that alerts the public that they're coming up to one? Or it doesn't seem like a lot of consistency in the signage.
Yeah, in the past, we've had, we have some signs that say bumps, speed bumps. We've been consistent, I think, the last few years, we just say, "Speed humps ahead." There'll be a sign under it that says, "Next one thousand feet," or "Next three blocks." And there will be those signs in advance of the speed humps in both directions. And then adjacent to the speed hump, if we don't have curb and gutter, we'll often install like a wooden post, a wooden bollard with reflectors. So people, sometimes people will try to go around them if there's not curb and gutter. So oftentimes, we don't like to install them when there's no curb and gutter, but we can sometimes do it if we put bollards there, so people can't go around them. But that's where you'll see the reflectors at.
Okay, so there'll be sort of a more standardized signage package that would go with those? And have we noticed any drainage issues relative to speed humps?
I haven't. We look at drainage, make sure that the gutter flow is not going to be impeded. All the ones I've looked at haven't been an issue. I think it really takes a pretty significant gutter flow to cause a flooding issue. But I haven't witnessed it yet. We do take a look at it when we design these.
Good. We had other, we had other issues going on. Counselor Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to ask if we have consensus to move forward with the changes to the NTMP program, with the additional language to change to add more than fifty percent?
Looks like we do. Okay. Is there any more discussion that we need to have around this issue right now, tonight? Thank you very much. Great presentation. I think good thoughtful consideration. So thank you all for being here tonight.
We're gonna, if it's okay, we'll keep going. It's the same slide deck, right, to talk about schools? Does that work?
So we will talk about school routes a little bit now, particularly for Prospect Valley and Stevens, as you know, both are taking on new students next year. This is just a diagram or a picture of the two school districts, or the current school district and the school districts that will be in effect next year. Current school districts on the left, as you can see, Color Strand will be absorbed by Prospect Valley and Wilmore Davis by Stevens. So pretty much everything west of Kipling Street now will be going to Prospect Valley, and everyone east of Kipling will be going to Stevens. So we wanted to look at the routes that new students would be taking from the closing school districts. So we created this map of our traffic and pedestrian infrastructure. It's kind of hard to see at this scale, but we have all our traffic signals on there, our four-way stop signs, flashing beacons, radar speedboards, our rectangular rapid flashing beacon crossings, and our school zones, which you can kind of see in the gray boxes there. So this is a blow-up of that map for the Color Strand and Prospect Valley districts. And then on the right, you can see the traffic calming that is nearby Prospect Valley. We laid out what we thought would be likely routes in green here. And you can see, it's a challenge to get students from the Color Strand district from the north to Prospect Valley because of the natural barrier of Clear Creek there. We also have Lena Gulch to contend with further to the south. So we looked at the likely routes, and as you're aware, it's going to be hard to put in sidewalks before the school starts in August. So we looked at some alternate things we could do to improve these routes, pilot projects. We looked at these, the first two pictures show crossing flags that can be used at intersections, and then crossing guard potentially for construction zones. And then on the bottom, we have striped shoulders, which are, almost serve as striped sidewalks for pedestrians. So taking a closer look at Prospect Valley, I'll just run through these routes pretty quickly, the routes that we think students will take. So Route One from the north is, it's going to collect students along Forty-fourth. And then we think there's a possible crossing of Clear Creek. If they go south on Moore Street, they can cross Clear Creek at the existing bridge. And then there's a dirt path that'll take them over to Oak Street, and they go south to Thirty-eighth and then over to Parfett, and they can get to Prospect Valley. You'll see Prospect Valley down there at the bottom in pink. Sorry, I didn't provide any context there. It's kind of hard to read these. One concern with that route is it takes students off the beaten path. They're not on a public street, and they're, you know, walking through a secluded area by Clear Creek. So some parents might have safety concerns about that. So we provided an alternate route there in yellow along Kipling Street. Kipling currently has sidewalks from Thirty-eighth to Forty-first. There's no sidewalks from Forty-first to Forty-fourth, but there is a dirt social trail that's fairly well separated from the street. So we do think that's a viable route, although it could be improved if we were to install sidewalks from Forty-first to Forty-fourth. Students would travel south along Kipling then and either go down Thirty-eighth or cut down Lee Street to Thirty-fifth. So we looked at some potential near-term improvements, or actually 2023 improvements that we could maybe do this summer for these routes. So one of the first things we could do is on Oak Street, there's a sidewalk gap between Thirty-eighth Avenue and Thirty-eighth Place. We could stripe a sidewalk there. And you see what that would kind of look like in that lower right corner. And then Thirty-eighth Avenue, we add some signage to show that it's a pedestrian route. And then at the intersection of Thirty-eighth and Parfett, we would look to add those crossing flags, like I showed in the previous slide. And then looking at some improvements beyond 2023. So we classified these as near-term improvements, which would be maybe in the next two or three years, and then longer-term improvements, which would be maybe five-ish years. So the near-term improvements would be just Oak Street, that segment that we want to stripe. We would just replace that striped sidewalk with actual sidewalk. And then for the Clear Creek, the crossing there, we would make that dirt path concrete. We would pave that to make that more of a formal route. And then also, we would take a closer look at Oak Street, collect traffic data, and see if any traffic calming is warranted there to make that route a little safer. In the long term, we're, I think, we're looking at sidewalks on Thirty-eighth Avenue now from Kipling to Youngfield. I think, I don't know where that project stands. I think we're exploring funding options for that now. So that could be, that route could be significantly improved in the future. So moving on to another route, just a collector route from the west, basically along Thirty-eighth Avenue. Thirty-eighth Avenue has some sidewalk gaps, obviously, but again, there's pretty wide shoulders and dirt paths where students can walk fairly safely. I think we could do some education and outreach, just telling students to walk on the left side of the street so they can see oncoming traffic. That's always a good idea. I think most kids probably do that already, but, you know, that might be good to get out to the schools, get that information out. Improvements we can make to this route, again, just crossing flags at Thirty-eighth and Parfett. And then the long-term improvements, again, are the Thirty-eighth sidewalk project that may happen in the next few years. Looking at a couple other routes from the west, Route Three along Thirty-second Avenue. Thirty-second Avenue has pretty good sidewalks already, not many gaps, so that's a fairly safe route. There is a signalized crossing at Pearson, so students can cross there and go straight up Pearson to access Prospect Valley. And then another collector route along Thirty-fifth, there's a crossing there over Lena Gulch, an existing crossing. And then kids can either go down Swadley or Sims. I think we have right of way there. There's no path now, but that would be a future improvement as well, is to improve that crossing and pave that. We've talked to Parks about both of these potential crossings at Lena Gulch and Clear Creek, and they're on board. They think that would be a good project, so we think that's a viable project as well. And then a couple routes from the east, just Route Number Five is Thirty-fifth Avenue, and Number Six is Thirty-eighth Avenue. Thirty-eighth Avenue, sidewalk gaps again, but adequate space for walking. Thirty-fifth also has sidewalk gaps, but it's a much lower volume road, so probably a safer route for kids. And one of our proposed improvements for 2023 is to stripe a sidewalk on the north side of Thirty-fifth. And that's shown what that would look like in the picture there on the right. Longer term, we would look to just replace that striped sidewalk with actual sidewalk. And then Thirty-eighth Avenue, eventually, will have sidewalks as well, hopefully. This is kind of hard to see, but this summarizes the immediate improvements we'd look to do in 2023, mostly striping, crossing flags, and things like that. Did a rough cost estimate on this, and we think we can do it for probably about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's all I had to present on Prospect Valley. I don't know if we want to break and talk about that, or if you want me to get right into discussion about Stevens' routes.
Do we have questions on that one? Counselor Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I just, I think that at one point in time, we used to have crossing flags at Thirty-eighth and Parfett. And so that was part of that local works project that was doing that. But I read through all of your recommended immediate improvements. I agree with all of them. And I want to say that it's been said before that we're a creative and scrappy community, and I think that this is actually, I really appreciate twenty-four thousand dollars. Definitely something we can fit into our budget and, you know, and get this done for our safe routes before, you know, school starts. And so I appreciate that. And I do just want to, for those that are watching, you know, we are hopefully, you know, trying to find some funding to address Thirty-eighth Avenue from Kipling to Youngfield, which would, which would help both of these schools quite a bit. So the only other thing I want to mention, though, is that I know for sure Prospect Valley and Stevens probably also does it. They have twice a year Bike Walk, Bike and Walk to School Day, where they talk about pedestrian safety and stuff like that. And so maybe hooking up with those schools to, you know, give a presentation to their students on those days would help them, would be helpful. I know they have one at the beginning of the year and one at the end of the year.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is actually applicable to both situations. But I think that education coalition, council, and then staff, and maybe even some of our service organizations could work together to get volunteer crossing guards. I know when I was in elementary school, traveling from my home to Pennington, when we crossed Forty-fourth Avenue, we had a gal that was local that helped as a crossing guard, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And there were actually sometimes more than one person that would kind of alternate in between that. So I think that working with those organizations, we could potentially come up with something particularly, and I know we're going to talk about this next, but with Wadsworth and it being really unsafe just because of the widening project and not having, you know, crosswalks, we should probably have some extra safety precautions in place.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. Looks like really great plans. I just want to make sure that we include the stormwater issues, because it's a, it's a really, whenever the beginning of the school year starts, I have students that will try and cut, either cut across the farm or come through the sort of canyon of Lena Gulch. And of course, after seeing, you know, the floods like we did last week, I mean, it's fifty feet across and just, it always terrifies me when, when I see kids. I mean, it's just a natural attraction, right? And they're going to be walking right by where Lena Gulch comes out towards the rec center. And so many kids, I mean, because it's, it feels like it's a quick way, and it is a quick way. But it, for those of you who aren't familiar, it becomes a walled creek, basically, from Thirty-eighth all the way over to Parfett and the farm. And if someone were down there when we, it's very dangerous, but it's also the coolest place ever. So, you know, just educating kids about being down in that area and maybe even having signage on how to get out, because there isn't any way to get out between Parfett and where it comes out at Miller? Is it Miller that, where that square is?
About there.
But I've often worried that, you know, and I don't know if that's just even some climbing, some ladders, like I've seen downtown for, for, what's downtown? Cherry Creek, Cherry Creek, and all the other ones. Anyway, just in our education, I just want us to remember stormwater issues and the fact that we have these great amenities that look really cool but are also very dangerous when it gets wet.
Thank you. Counselor Noslerbeck.
Thanks. Really appreciate all the work on this. With the, and I just agree with everything that's been said before, too. So with the long-term needs for sidewalks, is that something that would require kind of the same type of thing that we're doing with the speed bumps and the, like, working with neighborhoods to get the okay for sidewalks? In, I understand probably not so much for like Thirty-eighth, but on some of those side streets, this will come up also in the Wilmore Davis conversation. But along Parfett, or I can't remember, or Oak, I think, was the one where, you know, a lot of Wheat Ridge streets, people really love that there are no sidewalks. And I've, I've dealt with that even when we tried to, just when we were trying to walk to or bike to Wilmore Davis, there aren't sidewalks. Would we have to go through that same process?
It'll be a little bit different than the NTMP and probably different still than like the Thirty-eighth West, but you're right. We have, as a city, chosen to not to invest in sidewalks. We don't have a terrific model for how do you prioritize and then how do you? model for how do you prioritize, and then how do you prioritize sidewalks over parking or whatever else the neighbors have come to appreciate and love about their street. So we have a future study session, I think, on sidewalk connectivity, where we'll sort of start to talk more about where are the gaps and what would the process look like? And yes, there'd be a neighborhood engagement, there's always a neighborhood, or public process as a part of a design project. You know, our wheels sort of started spinning when sidewalk gaps was a part of a potential bond, because it's exciting, but also not everybody's going to be excited about it. And sort of, when do we say this is our prerogative, because it's a community, you know, greater good versus the, sort of, what, what weight does the vote of those individual residents have? Yeah, we're very, we're conscious of that. We haven't solved the problem or sort of designed the process yet, but you're right, it will need to involve the public.
I just think that probably, at least, at least for me as a counselor, I, I probably will be using any of the kind of Band-Aids that this project is for, like, this coming school year, as an example to show why we need sidewalks in a more permanent way. So, and the, the last thing I just throw out is that the next Education Coalition meeting for Wheat Ridge is on Thursday at the Visitor Center at three o'clock, and so I'd love to be able to take even your presentation with me to just show folks that this is what we're talking about and see if we can get some engagement to have, have at least some volunteers to help with implementation of this. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to talk about the, the connection between, on the, you know, the Clear Creek Trail, coming over the bridge, and then it connects down to Newman Street. Would there be any possibility that, and I'm very familiar with it because I bike through that area, I understand that that little spur, that Forty-First Avenue, is a, it's a dirt gravel road, it's kind of steep, it's hard to go up or down, especially on a road bike. But would it be possible, would Park Support widening that little social trail, you know, to whatever the smallest reasonable, that we could connect it to the Newman, because I, because that really does connect the other neighborhood across the Clear Creek? Has, has that conversation come up?
I think we're flexible there. We did talk to Parks about a couple of options. Instead of cutting over to Oak Street, I think we looked at cutting southeast over to potentially Miller. I don't know if we looked at Newman in particular, but from our discussions with Parks, it sounds like they're fairly open to, to any ideas to improve that area. The, the route over to Oak is, it was all on city property. There was a pretty steep staircase there that looked maybe like it's not ideal, so we could certainly explore other options there.
Is that all, is that the one that comes north of Newman, is that all city-owned then?
I don't know if the Newman one is. It looked pretty close, it ties in, the one we proposed ties into Oak, and it was kind of right up against the edge of city property, so we'd, we'd have to take a closer look.
Okay. Because you had, the nice thing about that is, is it would, the traffic, car traffic can't go through, there's some bollards and stuff right there. That would make it a lot safer for people traveling through that trail.
Yeah, we, we will take a look at that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for everything you've suggested here. I think that, that area is very big. Prospect Valley's articulation area is, is very large now, especially coming from all the way north towards I-70, and some of those students are going to be, I, I looked at Councilor Weaver when you were describing that, that path from Forty-Fourth all the way up to Prospect Valley, that is a long walk for, for some, some of those kids. So I, I agree with all that. I, I think the one thing that I, I think you mentioned, and I think that we should explore it more with Parks and, and anybody else we need to, is potentially putting a path, more of a formal path, from Lewis Meadows Park down Lena Gulch towards Prospect Valley. So right now, anybody from those neighborhoods that are, are near Color Strand have to go either down Thirty-Eighth or Thirty-Second, but if we had that path that would cut down essentially where Thirty-Fifth dead ends and, and stops before Parfett and all that, that would be a really, really great for those, those kids in those neighborhoods, including mine. So, but other than that, I'm all for it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions on Prospect Valley.
We'll move on to Wilmore Davis and Stevens. So this is similar blow-up of our traffic map, showing just Wilmore, Wilmore Davis and Stevens districts. We've tried to lay out some of the likely routes. Obviously, they're all coming from the west, where Wilmore Davis District is closing. With this combination, Wadsworth becomes the obstacle here, and that's complicated by the fact that it's under construction right now, so crossing Wadsworth is really the challenge for getting kids from the old Wilmore District over to Stevens. So currently, Thirty-Eighth Avenue is probably the safest way to cross. Obviously, that's going to be in flux. I think at some point, we're going to be doing construction at Thirty-Eighth, and by then, Forty-Fourth and Forty-First will be operational. So these, these routes are kind of going to be in flux until Wadsworth is done. We also looked down at Thirty-Second Avenue as a crossing. That's really not an ideal crossing. It's pretty, pretty dangerous. It is going to be approved in the next few years when we do the Wadsworth Trail Project, so in a few years, that should be a much safer crossing. So the viability of that route will be whether or not we can improve the Thirty-Second crossing or not. So crossing flags are an option. I don't know how useful they'll be there, because it's a pretty busy street. We could also explore a crossing guard there during construction, but, you know, typically crossing guards are a little closer to the school, but this would, this could kind of be a pilot project where we have crossing guards maybe in construction areas. So I'll zoom in on some of the proposed routes here. So the first route to get kids over to the east is along Thirty-Second Avenue. We have pretty good sidewalks on the south side, and where we don't have sidewalks, we have dirt trails along Crown Hill Park. So kids could potentially cross at Thirty-Second Avenue and then go east to Teller and go up Teller Street, where we have some pretty good traffic calming from Thirty-Second to Thirty-Fifth, and then make it up to Thirty-Eighth, where there's a nearby crossing at High Court, a signalized crossing, so that one is pretty safe. If people do not want to cross at Thirty-Second, we would recommend a detour up through Lutheran Parkway, which would get kids up to Thirty-Eighth Avenue, where it'll be safer to cross, and then they just head east and cross at High Court, where there's a signalized crossing. So some of the 2023 improvements we could look at for these routes is, like I mentioned, crossing flags at Thirty-Second Avenue or possibly a crossing guard. And then Teller Street, we could add some traffic calming, basically continue the traffic calming for that segment from Thirty-Fifth to Thirty-Eighth, which would be another two speed humps, and then some striped sidewalk on the east side of the street. And then at Thirty-Eighth and Teller, there's a missing crosswalk, so we would put an east-west crosswalk on the south side of that intersection. Also, crossing flags at High Court and Thirty-Eighth, I think that would be a, a good place for crossing flags, that's a signalized crossing, very close to the school. Then the longer-term improvements are filling sidewalk gaps on Teller Street, and we also looked at possibly doing that along Dudley, but I don't think there's any sidewalks there now, so that would be a pretty significant project. Another route is just directly along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Thirty-Eighth Avenue has really good sidewalks in this area, from Kipling to Wadsworth, so this route is pretty straightforward. Sidewalks all the way, cross at Thirty-Eighth, and then take the signalized crossing at High Court. The options, we would also look at potentially crossing flags at Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, or again, possibly a, a crossing guard, and then crossing flags at Thirty-Eighth and High Court. So a lot of these routes have the same proposed improvements, because they share, share some segments. Moving on, then Forty-Fourth is another viable route. Again, it's all going to hinge on what happens at that crossing there. If we can make that crossing safe at Forty-Fourth or when the construction is over, kids can continue east to Uppom Street and go south all the way to the school. If that crossing is, is not safe or during construction, kids can cut south on Ammon Street, which has pretty good sidewalks, and then make it to Thirty-Eighth, where they can continue to follow that earlier route. Some near, near-term or 2023 improvements for this route are looking, again, crossing guards, a crossing flags at Forty-Fourth. Uppom Street, I think we've had some, some neighborhood concerns about speeding there in the past, so that's a good opportunity for some potential traffic calming. It is an emergency route, so speed humps might be out of the question, so we'd have to look at other options. And then addition to the traffic calming, we would stripe sidewalk gaps along Uppom. And then the other 2023 improvement would be on Ammons, where that yellow route, there's a short sidewalk gap just south of Forty-Fourth, about two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet long, we would just stripe, do a striped sidewalk there for that missing sidewalk. And then in the two, three-year timeframe, we would just look at replacing that striped sidewalk with actual sidewalk. The last route we looked at from the west was along Forty-First Avenue, which is pretty good. Good sidewalk connectivity until you get east of Dover, or west of Dover, but there's good traffic calming along there as well, so that seems to be a viable route. When the crossing is done at Forty-First, kids can cross there and then walk down the very wide path on the east side of Wadsworth, down to Thirty-Eighth, and then follow that to High Court. Until that crossing's done, we'd recommend the yellow detour, which is again, just cutting south down Ammon Street to Thirty-Eighth, where it's going to be safer to cross. You can see that green dash line as well, that's a potential future option that cuts now, right now, through the Safeway Shopping Center, but there's the potential that that would redevelop in several years down the road, so if that does, we will make sure we secure easements right of way to make sure we can do a connection between Wadsworth and Uppom along Forty-First there. The 2023 improvements we would propose are, are basically the intersection proposals we've made for the other routes, crossing flags at Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, and then crossing flags at Thirty-Eighth and High Court. Over the next two to three years, we would look at just filling those sidewalk gaps along Forty-First Avenue that are west of Dover. And then long-term would be that potential green dashed route through the Safeway Shopping So those are the routes we looked at. This is another summary sheet for Stevens of the 2023 improvements. You can see this is a bit more expensive, a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars, but that's largely due to the traffic calming we've proposed along Uppom Street, which is a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars of that. So if you take that out, it's only thirty-one thousand dollars. Didn't have good pricing on crossing guards, so I didn't include that in here, but we, we can try to track that down if that's something we want to do. Also, we're hopeful that some of these striping projects can be done this summer, but the traffic calming along Uppom is probably not feasible until 2024. We have to survey it and design it, so it's unlikely we could get that done prior to the start of the school year. But the other ones, I'm hopeful that we can, we can get into our striping contract. So that's all I have. This is just the combined costs of Prospect and Stevens, so if we're to do everything on the list, the total price is a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you. Go, start with Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I did want to bring up that we do have flashing crosswalks at Thirty-Eighth and Uppom, and we do have on Thirty-Eighth, I think it's Parfett, and then like two more blocks down, so we do have a couple of those flashing crosswalks, which are, which help on Thirty-Eighth. But one of the, one of the things that, I, I live kind of off of the Thirty-Second and Teller area. When you, either way, when you're going, when you're going south on Teller, or if you're turning off of Thirty-Second or crossing Thirty-Second and you're going north on Teller, there's that hill right there. And, and often, oftentimes, there's, like, you'll come up on to a pedestrian. And so is there some way, maybe with signage or something that says, you know, student crossing, or something that would make people aware of, like, don't come up on to the, you know, don't come up over there, somebody might be there, or some way to address it? Because it, it is, that sightline is pretty dangerous right there.
Yeah, I agree. I live right over there. Actually, I was driving home tonight, and somebody was parked in that northbound lane, and it was pretty, you can't go around them just because you can't see, so I had to sit there for a while. But yeah, we can explore some signage. There's good sidewalks, I think, on the east side of the street there, which is helpful, but we would certainly, in the, I think, in the two- or three-year term, we're looking to fill that sidewalk gap on the west side as well, which would be helpful, but we can certainly explore some signage there, some kind of limited sight distance or something, because I agree, that's, that's a dangerous, a dangerous hill there.
Thank you. And then the crossguards, I'm all for paying for crossguards until Wadsworth is done, and I know that that's, I know it's an expense that is not in our Wadsworth budget, the ever-changing Wadsworth budget. But I do think that, you know, this is something that, that kind of came up, if we couldn't plan for it, but I think it's important that we find the money to do that. Otherwise, I support all of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am wondering, have the schools at all done a survey with any parents to find out how many children may be walking? Because Wilmore Davis is supposed to have buses, aren't they?
Yeah, I think I, I forgot to mention that when I was going through my presentation. I think Jeffco is offering bus service to kids who are west of Wadsworth, so that is helpful. I think there's probably still some kids, we think, that will probably walk. So, yeah, I think there still will be people walking.
Yeah. I'm just wondering why, when the schools are closing, why they wouldn't do that to find out maybe how many kids are walking? Because these are little kids, they're going to be exhausted by the time they get to school, you know? And there's a lot of parents who drive their kids, you know, to, to school. So I, I would just think that would be kind of interesting. I mean, you know, okay, thirty kids out of second grade are going to walk or whatever, that's different than kids that are like, you know, fifth grade or something, you know? I mean, it's a safety issue, and even going through Safeway Parking Lot is like, okay, that just doesn't sound very safe to me. But I just think, why, why wouldn't the schools think about that? And then also, if there are buses going to be provided from Wilmore Davis area, are the parents going to have to pay for them? Because that's what they've done before. They've been paying for buses.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. As far as any information from the schools about how many kids are walking, that would have been really helpful. I'm not aware of any of that information, but one of the things I think we should do as far as public outreach or education is maybe send a survey to these schools and, and try to find out how many kids are walking these routes before we invest any money in the, the longer-term solutions, because if nobody's taking these routes, maybe it doesn't make sense, and vice versa. If we have a lot of people walking, then maybe we can accelerate the construction process.
I just can't imagine, you know, these, these are little kids and needing to walk that far. You know, I know a lot of parents drive or they do carpools or something like that, but I think getting some statistics on that and stuff, it just doesn't sound safe. So that's just what I think.
Thank you, Councilor Noslerbeck.
I, I had a couple of other comments, but just, I was going to also respond to that a bit. One of the issues that we have is that kids are still choicing if they're going to if they're going to Stevens or Prospect Valley. So we don't have the data yet. If you went to the schools and asked them that question, they would say, well, our choice school is Stevens. But, you know, they might say, so far, it's looking like 30% are going to Prospect Valley or choicing out of the district or whatever it might be. So we don't have those numbers. My, my, but I, I am on the, on the west side of Wadsworth. My kids will have an option. We don't have any information yet on where the school bus will be picking up from and if, and how that works. My biggest concern with the busing option is that life doesn't operate on bus schedules. And I, I want to make sure we have a plan in place for those mornings when parents are scattered and someone misses the bus and a kid makes the quick decision to walk to school. They know that they're gonna be able to get there safely. Or home because they have, you know, chess camp after school and they miss the bus. What's their safe route? That's, that's really what I'm trying to get at. In addition to all the other things that you brought up, Counselor Hutchinson. We will get that data at some point. And it's probably that this year with Wilmore, too, will be a lot of learning and information gathering to figure out what those crossing, those routes are going to be. Something, though, that just seems to be a part of the perfect storm of the school closures and then our kids' safety in getting there to school is with the Wadsworth closures, I think we also need, or with the Wadsworth construction, we need to also be considering the fact that Dudley and Ammons and Everett are all being used as cut-throughs to avoid the construction. And they've been used as a cut-through for Wadsworth even when it, it wasn't a safe route when it was to Wilmore Davis either. And so, but now it's even more dangerous because people are using it as an option to steer clear of Wadsworth. And so I think we need to take into consideration potentially, like, either it's crossing guards or flashing lights. Or, I mean, even if we can get, like, I think what works really well, just because I drive it all the time on Dudley, like, the police, like, it flashes, the flashing lights at you to Go 25 in that residential area. There's, there's just, I think, an extra amount of attention that needs to go to any of those areas that are those, those cut-through spots. I, I really appreciate, I loved seeing that Forty-first and potential for us to build something that is a crossing through the parking lot. Just because any kid or family is used to using Forty-first as a, as an entrance to Wilmore. And so they will opt for that and not walk all the way up to Thirty-Eighth during construction or anything. And so I think us thinking forward as that being a safe crossing is really great. You all were given a really challenging feat, that it was like, here and make that part gravel and make this part, never have worked. And then also a construction project on top of it all. So I really appreciate all the thought that went into it. When you first put the slide up, Jordan, I was like, he didn't even think about Forty-Fourth. And then you had a whole really great plan. So I really appreciate all the consideration. Because I'm really emotional about this, but this is, this is my kids and all the people that I love going through this. And we're all so concerned. I was just texting with a bunch of moms who are watching right now. And this matters so much to us because we just want to all stick together on this one. So we're with you and just keep, keep plowing away on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, one, one point that I'd like to bring up, too, is that if, even if we don't have a lot of students walking necessarily, if we make the route safe, then it may be a choice that they'll make, they'll be able to make. But also, it's a good point that we do kinda need data. We won't be able to get that data before school starts. And, and probably not until the middle of the year-ish, right? Beginning of school is always, you know, you hit the ground running and it's super busy. And there's also still a lot of changes that still happen for the whole first month. But it's definitely something that, it's, it's not like crossing guards on Wadsworth at those two places is something that's set in stone for the whole year. So if we get the data and it's not working, or we have found a gap, then those are things we can address later. But our, this as a base plan, I think, is a really great base plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Ms. Hutchinson asked about busing. Busing is free next year for the students that are, at least for the students that are moving to different schools, which I guess, and we won't know those busing routes until next year either, probably, and if they have enough bus drivers to cover the busing routes. But I think it's important that we also make sure that we have safe routes to those busing, those bus stops, too. And those are typically in neighborhoods and around that way, too. So that's something to think about, too, as we're kinda seeing what's going, going on. If they're, if they're picking up on streets that don't have sidewalks and things like that, maybe we need to work with Jeffco or maybe we need to look at that. So can we go for a consensus to move forward with all of the?
No, I've got another, sorry, I got someone else ready to speak, and that's Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna comment that having grown up in a very, very small town with very little traffic, having walked, you know, about a mile in kindergarten to and from school, the, the distance wasn't the problem. It was the, the trap, there wasn't any traffic. And the biggest thing that the kids are gonna have to contend with, and I've taken my kids, walked them across, because I'm close to Wilmore Davis, and walked them across Wadsworth pre-construction. And it's, you gotta really watch them and it's nerve-rotting. And, and now with the construction going on, I am 100% behind. You know, whatever we need to do to have crossing guards to help the kids, because there's not, there's gonna be kids without parents. They're gonna, they're gonna cross for one reason or another. The parents might be working. So definitely as a city, we just have to, this is something we have to do to get those kids safely across. And we can take it, and I've ridden the buses as a kid. And it's like, yeah, where are you gonna, where are you gonna go to meet that bus? And it has a schedule. And it's a time thing of, you know, would you want your kids out there, your little ones standing by the bus by themselves? Hopefully, you know, they're not gonna wander off. It's, it's tough. And so there's gonna be a lot of different choices. And we just have to be flexible and really advocate for safety for the kids getting to the bus routes. And even apart from the schools, one of the reasons I moved where I, I moved to was because I wanted access. I didn't wanna live somewhere where I have to get in my car and I have to drive 10, 15 minutes to go to the grocery store. So I like, from where I live, west of Wadsworth, of actually walking sometimes. If I'm gonna go to the post office, or I'm gonna go to the grocery store, I wanna, you know, cross the street, go to the McDonald's, I have those options. And so we always have to advocate for safety, especially with kids. And this is gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough time with the construction. It's, it's not good timing, but those are the cards that we're dealt with. And I support definitely, you know, having the crossing guards, whatever we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Can I get a consensus to move forward with the suggestions for Stevens? And I don't know if we did a consensus for Prospect Valley. So can we do a consensus to move forward with both Prospect Valley and Stevens recommendations?
Looks like we do. Thank you. Any more discussion on this, on our, on our safe routes to school, both of our schools? Okay, well, thank you very much. Great, great presentation, great discussion. Hopefully, we've got some thoughtful, safe things going on. Okay. Okay. That finishes our Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan update. Staff reports, Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things while Maria's still here. Do you, do you wanna give an update real quick on the, the overflow issue over the weekend? Maria did obviously a great job. She was, spent her, part of her weekend there, so thank you. There was a lot of other staff members there, too. But Maria was on board and, and spent her Sunday there, so.
Happy Mother's Day. Yeah, just, just very briefly, that area is actually owned, it was a former wastewater treatment plant, I guess, down in that area. So it's at the very west end of Forty-First Avenue. As you go down off of Miller and there's, well, we kinda showed it here previously. So that whole area. So it was observed by the community service officer early that morning of Sunday that there was overflow coming out of this, what we call a settling basin. So there's several pipes coming into this settling basin. And from there, as it's described, it settles out. And then it goes through another pipe into the Metro wastewater system. That settling basin was overflowing. And so there was, either there was too much water coming into the line or there was actually, what we found was a blockage. So there is actual raw sewage coming out into the field, making its way down to Clear Creek. So the community service officer called in Metro Fire to get their hazmat staff on, or team on site. And then Public Works and Parks also deployed on call to try and address it. So it's, if you know that area, it's very wide, open kind of channel and field there. So we started, Public Works brought in heavy equipment, our loader, our front end grader, to try and create some berms to stop the drainage or stop the sewage from going further. Meanwhile, we had called Northwest Lakewood Sanitation District, which actually owns that facility. And their environmental consultant, Ramey, came in and actually jetted the pipe and found a blockage. So they found basically a ball of wipes, which you can't put down the, put down into sanitary sewer, combined with a root ball as well as some rocks. So there was a pretty significant blockage in there that was causing everything to back up. So they were able to clear that out, that overflow stopped. And now then it was time to look at what's the remediation of all this sewage out in the field. So their plan right now is to go through, I believe they were gonna bring out their vector today, a back truck. There's standing pools of water mixed with other items. And so they're gonna vector that out to the best of their abilities. Then they're gonna treat the entire area with lime. And what that does is it kinda sets up the materials, kinda dries it up to some extent. And yet it's not, it also treats it from a perspective of taking away any kinda hazards. And so rather than putting chlorine in, that again, could get into Clear Creek, they're suggesting to use lime. Then they'll come through with some heavy equipment, scrape off the surface wherever that material was, was settled. And then they'll revegetate the area. So that will take several days, probably to a couple of weeks, since it is so wet out there.
Thank you. That's much better than I could've done.
Maria, is, is this wastewater treatment plant been decommissioned or?
Yeah, I guess there were several, it was a, like, a actual facility with like a building and, and tanks and everything. And so there's just this one kinda smaller, it's probably the size of half the, half the dius up here. It's not too big. But that's all that's left. And so that, so again, several pipes come into this area. And then from that point out, it's treated by Metro wastewater.
Is there any other sort of decommissioning on a permanent basis? Or it doesn't sound like the work that we're doing now is more remediation of the, of the overflow that we had. Is there any other sort of decommissioning that we should be looking for?
No, I think, you know, the, the cover on this, so it is covered with some plastic. And there's obviously been vandalism to that. So they've actually, we heard from Ramey that the district has within their budget, they're gonna put steel plates on it instead of the plastic, just to prevent items from going into it from above.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Counselor Weaver.
Just for, could you just explain how lye is used to help the cord? And you guys, that we've been, have houses, that is, for you about?
Yeah, that, I think that's a great explanation. Is again, I think they're looking at the lye actually will react with the nutrients within waste products to make it more, less damaging to the environment and basically becomes inert. And therefore, it's easier to clean up. And then there's no fear of that getting into Clear Creek again, where chlorine and elevated chlorine levels can significantly affect wildlife.
Counselor Nosler Beck.
So I was just thinking about some of the, like, my kid today was on a field trip cleaning up trash along Clear Creek. And I'm just wondering if the creek is contaminated or if it was contaminated and if we're, we're supposed to be staying clear from it after a certain amount of time.
Good point. What, what I didn't mention is that CDPHE, so Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, was contacted. So they are aware of it. And then they're going to get data from Metro wastewater to see what the elevation and contamination levels are. So the state is actually following up. At this time, we were not aware of anything that we needed to restrict people from either being on the trail nor in the creek area. So we feel that if, if that had been, that they would've notified us of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director.
Thank you. One other quick item. So Foothills Regional Housing reached out to us last week, I believe, or the week before, about an opportunity that came up pretty quickly for them to purchase a 24-unit apartment building in Wheat Ridge. It's at, located at 4097 Vance Street. So that's where Town Center Park is and the road that goes through the Safeway Development. And there's that office building between, there's the, there's Town Center Park, there's the road, then there's an office building. It's just east of that. Yeah, you could show it up if you want.
Is that the brand-new one?
Yeah, brand-new, brand-new. So Foothills is, is actually able to purchase this building at a price that is cheaper than they can build something themselves. It's 24 units. They are already under a letter of intent to purchase it. They're hoping to close potentially in the next week or so. They're asking, Foothills is asking if the city would like to contribute in any way to the purchase of the building. You know, we do, don't have a lot of money sitting around for things like this, but we have created the housing fund, which was a recommendation of our housing strategy plan. And we are putting, currently putting money into that from lodgers' tax revenues from short-term rentals. We, I think we're projecting to have close to $800,000 by the end of this year. But we do have at least $400,000 in there now. So I told Lori that Rosendahl, the executive director of Foothills, that I would mention this to you this evening. It's a fairly quick turnaround for them. But I would recommend that the city consider contributing potentially around $400,000 from our housing fund. What the city gets for that, it's a small amount. The building, it's, it's for sale for seven and a half million. Again, I had mentioned there's 24 units. Foothills is planning to use the, the 24 units, 12 of them, for individuals at the 50% area median income, which is, for one person, is about $41,000. That's their income limit. And two people, it's about $47,000. So to half of the building, 12 units, would be for those folks who are at the 50%. And the other half would be for folks at the 80% AMI. And that is about $62,000 income limit for one person or $71,000 for two people. If we contribute some funding, we would also have first, make sure I get this language correctly, we would be allowed to use half of those units for our navigation program, if they're available. We would have, we would be kinda first on the list to be able to put folks into those, into that building. So asking you tonight, can't make any official decision tonight. But if you, if you wanna make a consensus, we can bring back the official resolution to actually spend the funding or transfer the funding. or transfer the funding at a future meeting. But we've talked internally about it. Lauren, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but this is definitely one of the reasons our consultants recommended that we create a housing fund, is to subsidize projects like this as they come up. This is a very quick turnaround, but these opportunities don't come up all that often. So any questions?
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you. Would, okay, refresh my memory, the one that's gonna be across the street that they're gonna build that the county gave them a bunch of money for, that's gonna have cohabitated offices for counseling and it's got restricted, I think it's like twelve units restricted for those experiencing homelessness, coming straight out of homelessness.
Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So remind me, what is the AMI mix in that building, besides the restricted ones for the ones coming straight from homelessness?
That building is, I think, a sixty percent average in that first phase. They are gonna go, that's a multi-phase project, they're potentially gonna have two hundred units at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth. They'll go up to eighty percent in some of the other units.
And then, so they're not going down to fifty percent in that building, other than the ones that are designated specifically for...
Yes, half the units, twenty-five, are designated for Jefferson Center for mental health for...
For those experiencing homelessness coming from the...
Those will be below the fifty, but there's gonna be, it's an average they use.
This project being basically across the street, I mean, like, you can just go behind the big lots to get there? Would these residents then be available for the services that are also gonna be co-located at the other building, which is a short block?
I don't know. I can't answer that this evening. They're typically provided case management through Jefferson Center, so I don't know if they could go to that center or to whatever case management Foothills provides.
And you said that we would get, we would get first right of refusal to units for our housing navigation program?
If available, yeah, in the fifty percent units, fifty percent AMI, so half of the building would be, we could use for, if they're not filled.
And we project to be able to, we have four hundred thousand now, we project to be able to, by the end of the year, have eight hundred thousand. So basically it'd be half of our account of what we would be collecting this year.
Yep. And you will be seeing, I think, next Monday, a request to hire a housing specialist to manage this housing fund and to go out, go after additional funding through other means in addition to our lodging tax. So we're hoping that fund's gonna build up very quickly with other grant resources very soon.
All right, I support this.
Councilor Weaver.
I'm really supportive of this. This is a great opportunity and it's in the right place. So I'm very supportive of this.
Additional discussion? Do we have consensus to move this forward next week?
Great. Thank you. That's all I got.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. We'll go to elected officials' matters. Raise your hand if you've got something and I'm gonna turn around to our clerk and see if he's got anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, any, Councilor Stites?
I just wanted to thank the mayor for allowing me to step in and host his coffee on Saturday. It was a lot of fun, a great discussion with all the citizens there and hopefully I didn't mess it up too bad and they'll all be back next month again.
And I want to thank you for taking that assignment. I, we had a very beneficial retreat with Dr. Cog. We've had a lot of success with Dr. Cog over the last year or two and I think we've got a good group of people there and a lot of interesting things going on. So thank you for taking that. Councilor Nosler Beck.
On Thursday, I attended the Jeffco School Board meeting and just wanted to provide a little bit of an update that they're starting to look into the second phase of the revitalizing thriving schools or something. I always forget what the acronym is, but it's ROFTS. And just, I had made some comments about hoping that the school district will, you know, partner with community organizations and local municipalities as they start to consider their next steps, because there are going to be, you know, closures happening. But I think that this round of this stage in the process, they're really looking to try and engage and work with communities to better inform the decisions and hopefully find some other solutions. So I just would encourage both the council and anybody tuning in who cares about, you know, making sure that we continue to have thriving schools in our community, just reach out to your school district, to our school board members and let them know we're here to have continued conversations. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Just wanted to, with all this talk of traffic, to remind everybody to be really, really careful, especially since there are farmers in the ditch digging out their water pipes on Thirty-Eighth, so...
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout-out to several events this week. So Local Works has a calendar of events on their website. Wednesday, the seventeenth, is the Wheat Ridge Farmers Market from five to seven at Wheat Ridge Poultry and Meats, which is fifty-six, fifty, West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. And then they're having their Live Local May event on Thursday, the eighteenth. It's curls and cocktails at the Hendrix Salon, which is seventy, forty-three, West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, from five to seven PM. And so they'll teach you how to curl your hair and do some hair tutorials and demonstrations while you have a beverage. And registration is encouraged for that event. And on Saturday, the twentieth, they're having a vaccine party for animals. They have a low-cost pet vaccine and licensing clinic. So the vaccines are offered, vaccines offered for dogs and cats. And then they have licensing for twenty dollars and that will be at Anderson Park from nine to one PM. And then after that, you can head on over to New Image Brewing. They are kicking off their summer market. So they have a beer garden open from eleven AM to ten PM. They're going to have a little vendor market from eleven AM to four PM and then live music from noon to four. So some great things going on in District Four this weekend.
Lots of great things coming up this summer. Any other elected officials' updates or any other business to come before our non-business meeting tonight? We will be back here at our regular city council meeting one week from tonight, so if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you.